Good evening. Welcome to the April 2 meeting of the governing body. We'll call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention, so she's ready. Okay. To Councilwoman Hofer, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father, you are my Father. I am your Father.
Okay. Dear Father, thank you for bringing us together today. Thank you for our many and abundant blessings. Let us fully listen to each other, our staff and our citizens, with an open mind. Give the governing body, city leaders, and all of our civil servants wisdom so that we may solve problems, serve our city well, and bring growth and prosperity to our community. Please keep our police, firefighters, public works, and utility staff safe. Finally, continue to guide us in our search for our new city manager. Amen.
Amen, sir.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I forgot to say you. It is.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's switch on the agenda. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akla.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Kell.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan. Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have nine present with Councilmember Duncan absent.
Okay. I believe the councilman will be arriving shortly. After the roll call, typically we would move on to presentations, but tonight I want to defer to the city manager for him to acknowledge one of our new city staff. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor and governing body. Mayor and governing body, citizens in the audience and citizens watching us, I'd like to introduce Pam Foster, who is our new human resource director. That means I no longer am acting human resource director. And she started this week, so I'm pleased to have her onboard with her experience.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, Pam. I appreciate it. Okay, now we'll move on to the second item on the agenda. Presentations. Madam Clerk?
Presentation we have is Greater Topeka Partnership 2024 Inner City Tour.
Mr. City Manager.
Juliette Abdell, President and Senior Vice President of Governmental Affairs with GTP, will make a presentation to us.
Is your mic turned on? Because sometimes it's...
Check, check. It's on.
Okay.
Might move it a little closer. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
A little bit. Well, good evening, Mayor and governing body, Juliette Abdell with the Greater Topeka Chamber President, which is a part of the Greater Topeka Partnership. I also have with me...
India Yarbro, as of yesterday, VP of Marketing Communications for the Greater Topeka Partnership. So happy to be here.
It is super low, by the way. So I did have a couple of slides. I don't know if we have them where we can display them at all. Perhaps it's okay if we don't. So when I started five months back, I had one-on-one visits with many of you. I also visited with a lot of stakeholders and community members and really took to heart any feedback and information that you shared with me. And one of those that came up was the inner-city visit and wanting to know dates and information about the program way ahead of time. I guess in the past that hadn't been shared too far in advance. So I wanted to make it a point to get on your calendars to make sure that we had an opportunity to give more information about this program, why we host it, and what's to be expected. So a little bit more about the inner-city visit. This is an annual program that the partnership hosts. The purpose of this program is really to go out to an up-and-coming community that has come up with innovative ways to address community challenges that they face. They've also delved a little bit deeper into coming up with solutions to development, to economic activity, and really driving their community forward. And as an organization that really focuses on advancing economic vitality in our community, we find it's invaluable to have those one-on-one conversations. So this year, we're partnering with our fellow community that's over in Nebraska, Lincoln, Nebraska. And we're going out to Boise, Idaho in July. And I believe it's July 16.
Yes.
And India has been kind of hands-deep in the planning of this program. So I do want her to kind of go over the details of what those days will entail, what's to be expected on those particular sessions that we plan to have.
Perfect. Slide this forward a little bit. So yes, July is the month. July 16 through 19 are those dates, with July 16 really being a travel day for most folks. And as Juliette said, we're going to Boise, Idaho. It's a capital city with a pure capital city from Lincoln, Nebraska. You know, I think our inner-city visit in 2022 with Lawrence, our peers in Lawrence, really drove home the value of regionalism for us. And so we really wanted to expand that a little bit this year and go with a pure capital city in the region. So we will have three capital cities kind of in the mix for this inner-city visit. The bulk of programming will happen on July 17 and 18. We'll have lots of good discussions. You know, elected officials in the mix. Both the mayor from Boise and Lincoln will be present. We'll have elected leader panels. We'll have discussions about riverfront development, about small business and entrepreneurship, about placemaking, downtown development, arts and culture. They really have a, you know, on one of our planning visits, we got to explore the downtown a little bit and then really see what they're doing firsthand in Boise to really be innovative about their placemaking work. So we'll be exploring and diving into all of that on this inner-city visit. And I really think there will be some strong lessons for us to bring back to Topeka for, you know, to make our own community better. So what am I forgetting here? TopekaLincoln.com is the website where you can find more info about our inner-city visit this year. And we do have a couple of resources already out there for those looking for more information on the trip. You know, why we chose Boise and what you can expect from the experience. On TopekaLincoln.com, we do have a podcast episode featuring partnership CEO Matt Provarnik, as well as Lincoln Chamber of Commerce CEO Jason Ball. And that's just, you know, it's an 11-minute, I think, listen. And so it's a great resource to just learn a little bit more about why we chose Boise, what this partnership, two peer communities traveling together, what that looks like. And then Lincoln has helped us put together a video also promoting the trip. And the partnership just shared that on our Facebook page as well. So we do have some resources out there for those really wanting to learn a little bit more on their own and dive in. And more about the agenda can be found online at TopekaLincoln.com as well. So thank you. I think that's all I have.
Any questions? I have a quick question. I've been fortunate enough to go on a couple of these inner-city visits. I know that typically we get some feedback. We feed back to GTP to see what the highlights were and what we've learned and be able to follow up on maybe some of the ideas that we've shared. I don't know that everyone understands that. It's just not elected officials. There are, if you could kind of give a description of the diverse representation that goes on this.
Sure. I can kick it off. And if Juliette has anything to add that I missed, would love to have her tag team this. It's really a diverse mix. You know, we usually have up to about 100 different people from the Topeka community traveling on these inner-city visits. You know, business owners, elected officials in the community, leaders with a stake in different, you know, we've had leaders involved in Momentum and our Momentum strategies who, you know, are wanting to learn more about a specific idea or topic, and they see that it's reflected in the agenda. You know, they may want to come along. That's been a trend in the past. So it's really a good mix of, you know, leaders across the community, business owners, C-suite executives from some of the different companies in town, elected officials, and anyone who has an interest in growing their community and really learning from a peer community in order to do that.
So I'll just echo that and share that we strive for diversity in not only the topics that we have, but in the attendees. So small to large businesses, whether it's someone that's employed by one, owns a business, elected or unelected official, we're trying to represent as much of our community on this trip as possible. The topics that are identified, as you noted probably in the overview, touch all of the components of the partnership as well with the Greater Topeka Chamber, the Go Topeka, Visit Topeka, and the Downtown Topeka and Riverfront Advisory. We've strategically selected those topics to align with if there are projects that they're doing that are of value that we may be able to either mirror or enhance and add to, that we can replicate that in any one of the organizations that we represent here directly in Topeka.
Okay. Well, thank you for that detail. I appreciate it.
All right.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Along those same lines, since we might be wanting to network with others who might be interested in going, could you talk briefly about what the, is that a bus trip? Are people flying? Is there a fee? And if so, are there scholarships? Or how does that work?
So I'll start on the fees and the scholarships, and then I'll have you kind of go into the program portion of it. In terms of the fees, so all the fees that are associated with this are truly to cover the cost of you attending the event. It's not necessarily for us to net and make revenue off of it. We just want to break even essentially on providing the service. There are some people that are flying out there. There are some people that are driving out there. So that is whichever is of comfort to the registrant is kind of how we defer. We do have scholarships that are budgeted in that cover specific individuals that meet those criteria, whether it's cost prohibitive or status in the community, et cetera. So depending on kind of who is registering, we may have a pocket of funds that we're able to tap into to allow for you to experience that while also trying to make it more affordable.
Absolutely. And on the networking side of your question, I know you're probably thinking of that Montgomery bus trip that we all took together. You know, it was a great opportunity to really sit next to your peers and just talk about, you know, debrief on what you just experienced. And I think the, there will not be a bus trip this year. You know, Boise is a little bit further away. So we do expect most people to fly. But we will, you know, we have networking events each day to really kind of capitalize on some of those, you know, with everyone being in the same room, all these different leaders from different sectors of the community coming together. We do want opportunities for them to talk and reflect on what they've learned and think about how that applies to Topeka in a broader way. So we do have a networking reception each day that we're there. And there will be different meal opportunities that will allow folks to network as well. You know, we have one lunch being planned that are a really cool center that's, all consists of local businesses and different entrepreneurs, you know, offering different types of food in one kind of warehouse space. And so, you know, we do expect there may be chances where, you know, you've met someone in a session earlier in the day and you decide to sit with them at lunch, you know, to talk about that experience. And, you know, the receptions in the evenings, I think, will be another great opportunity for that. And then we hope, you know, you grab business cards and set up coffees after the fact as well to keep the learning and inspiration going. So that's just a taste of the different networking opportunities available.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you both for the presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll move on to item three, the consent agenda, if you'll read.
A is approval of workers' compensation claim settlement in an amount of up to $40,000 to resolve the claim with Ty Forsey for a work-related injury sustained by an employee with, while engaged in normal work duties. B are minutes of the regular meeting of March 19, 2024, and there are no applications.
Okay. We've heard the consent agenda is read. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Dobler.
Second.
Second, with Councilwoman Kell. Can we do the machine?
Yes, you can.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Motion being carried. We'll move on to agenda item number four, action items. Brenda, if you'll read.
A is a resolution introduced by Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project number 701031 and 281250, Phase 7, for street improvement and waterline replacement for Southwest Topeka Boulevard from 29th Street to 21st Street.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and governing body, this item along with 4B and 4C are resolutions that are amending your capital improvement program. And Braxton Kopley, Public Works Director, will lead this discussion with you.
Okay. Director?
Thank you. And for many of you, the very long-awaited project to actually get started on Topeka Boulevard, 21st to 29th is the first one. As this project is over $250,000, we need your permission before we can award the contract for bid. This is a total of $2.5 million. That includes the mill and overlay of Topeka Boulevard just south of 21st down through 29th, as well as the replacement of about four blocks of waterline. We hope to get started in June on this project, and we'll take the entire construction season. For the initial part of the project will be at the intersection of 29th. If any of you have driven through that, you've probably seen my street guys there every single day patching potholes. So we're very anxious to get started on that. We need to do a full closure of that intersection so that we can blow through there. We anticipate one week to get that mill down and overlaid, and then we will start going north from there. Likely, we will do a full closure of the section between 29th and 27th, which is basically adjacent to the armory. None of the residences are served off of the Boulevard. This will allow us to move that project more quickly and to save money, which is always one of my objectives. And then once we get past 27th, then we will make sure that we have one lane northbound and one lane southbound during the construction of the project. And with that, I'll gladly stand for any questions and respectfully ask for approval of this project.
Any questions? Director? Is there a motion?
Oh.
Who was that? Okay. Move to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second. Second by Councilwoman Kell. I mean, I suppose I expected to bring in Councilwoman Miller. Excuse me.
It's all right. Don't let that one slide.
I recalled Dobler last week.
Okay. We have a second. We can do our vote now by the machine. I'm waiting for you to approve. It's your district.
We have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Motion's carried. Move on to the next one. City managers, can we just have Director Kopley go ahead and present?
All right. This is 4B. This is a project, this is a resolution for a project budget exceeding $250,000, micro-surfacing project. And Braxton Kopley, Public Works Director, will lead you on this one, too.
Okay. Director?
Excellent. This one and the next one are both projects under our Street Contract Preventative Maintenance Program. As I have discussed before, it's far more cost-effective to keep our good streets good. It's only $50,000 a lane mile to do a micro-surface of a street to keep that pavement condition index good. So this first one is our, what we call our routine micro-surfacing project, where we do one-quarter of the city every year. So basically, we've divided the city into four quadrants. And those are divided north and south by 21st and east and west by Topeka Boulevard. So this year, the quadrant is the northwest corner, which will be west of Topeka and north of 21st. And we hope to get a large number of lane miles micro-surfaced over the course of this summer. And with that, I'll ask for approval and stand for any questions that you would have.
Any questions from the director? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second by Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla. Are we ready to vote?
All right, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Motion carried. And we'll move on to action item 4C. City manager?
This is another public works project with a project budget exceeding $250,000. It's an ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface, and it will take place in the northwest quadrant of the city, southeast Sixth Avenue. And Public Works Director Kopley will give you more detail.
Director?
Absolutely. And you all will remember about a month ago, I came in front of you and asked for an increase in the amount of our street maintenance program to be able to add an additional $1 million specifically to target arterials and collectors with U-BASS, which is ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface. What we plan to do is, in advance of the Polk Quincy Viaduct project, which we call PQV, they're going to close I-70 at McFicker. And because of that, we know we're going to have a tremendous amount of traffic traveling down McFicker to Sixth Street, and then they are going to go east to get into the downtown. And then at the end of the day, they're going to reverse that. And so we want to go in and do a U-BASS treatment on Sixth Street that'll go from McFicker to Monroe. And then in addition, Monroe and Madison, 6 to 10. We want to get U-BASS treatments down on those because we know those are going to take a beating as well during the PQV project. And so with that, I will ask for approval and gladly answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Councilman Dobler?
Director Kopley, I'm not sure, but I get the feeling that you just like to say "U-BASS." Is that correct?
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Some move.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second by Councilwoman Kell.
I have a comment.
Pardon?
I have a comment.
Okay. Comment before we vote?
Yes, I would just like to thank the committee that met, Councilwoman Dobler and Councilwoman Banks. And I think that's where the sound is coming from. Neil heard it so much in our infrastructure committee. And so now we're hearing it again. But I would encourage my colleagues to also vote for this because staff's done a good job. Thank you, Braxton, for all you've done and for looking out of the quality of our streets. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam. Okay. Are we ready to vote?
All right, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Motion's carried. We'll move on to action item 4D. City manager, I mean, Madam Clerk?
D is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Neil Dobler updating a policy for reserve balances for the city of Topeka and repealing Resolution Number 8824.
Okay. City manager?
This is a, as the city clerk said, this is a resolution updating the city of Topeka reserve balances policy. And Councilwoman Dobler, along with staff members, have worked hard on trying to bring this, so to speak, into modern times. So I will turn it over to them to give you more detail.
Councilman, is your...
Well, I know we had discussion of this a couple of weeks ago. Again, this keeps the reserve fund, the existing reserve fund as it is now, at 20%, which is 5% above our target of 15. Everything above that at this time of year, when the books are closed on the previous year, goes into a unassigned reserve fund. Much better name than my original name. And for use on projects, one-time projects can be brought before the council anytime during the year. And I guess I would stand for any questions if there are any or leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla?
Thank you, Mayor. Not being familiar with this, this is the first time we've done this, right? Putting this extra into this reserve fund. Is there any kind of move as we have this in there to caution or be cautious with not going into it all right away? In other words, kind of see if we can spread it out a little bit over the year or into the next year or the next year?
Councilman?
Great point. And that's one of the reasons that I brought this forth. As you recall, a month ago or so, we had a list of projects, 8.5 million, I think it was, with a request to approve those. We hadn't really seen them beforehand. And I think this makes more sense for, and that's one of the big reasons. I mean, it is a reserve. It's a reserve we can spend. But I don't think there's, I don't think it's good policy to spend it all upfront. As those projects come forward, not all of them need to be funded immediately. We don't know in this economy what it looks like six months from now. So maybe we spread that out over the year and then have the ability to put it into our reserves if necessary. So great point. Thank you.
Well, and I like that thoughtfulness and approach. Thank you.
Rochelle, do you have part of this presentation on this item?
No, sir. Just happy to assist with any questions the governing body might have.
Okay. Any other questions? With Councilman Duncan and then Councilman Miller.
So, okay, I want to make sure I've understood what I've been reading. Is this all new language or just the red?
The red.
Okay. So like on page two, underlines like 63 through 67, "The city manager shall notify the governing body in circumstances when reserve funds will be used to, for emergencies, disasters, and then provide resources to fund obligations required by..." That's been our long, that's already been our policy.
Correct. That is current resolution language.
Okay. Okay. Then does that same, and I've read the language, does that mean that the same applies to this new fund? Or does every dollar spent out of this new fund, or does it say this at all? Because I haven't seen it, but I could absolutely be missing it, have to come back to us for approval? approval? Okay, so the reserve fund, the, I'm going to call it Reserve Fund A, and I know they have better names than that, has those provisions, and Reserve Fund B, every dollar has to get prior approval?
Correct.
Okay, just want to clarify that. That's what I thought I read, but it's nice to ask first.
Councilman Miller and then Councilwoman...
Oh, go ahead. So, I guess that goes off of what Spencer was just saying, so it's more steps for us to be able to access those funds?
If I could, Mayor. I was going to add this on, I believe it goes to the Policy and Finance Committee first and then to the City Council. So, it gets a, gets a couple of looks at what the request is before it's approved.
Is there any indication that this would cause any delay in any projects with having those extra steps for this extra fund?
Councilman?
I think this is all money that was not budgeted for this year. So, the, you know, projects are already, whether they're in the CIP or the 2024 budget, they've already, the funding's already identified. So, this is extra funding.
Okay.
And it's really new, new projects or new items that come up.
Okay. And again, it's one time only, right? Okay, further questions? Councilman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I made some comments last time, and I've really given this a lot of thought, asked some, some folks, some questions and staff as well, and I appreciate that. I'm not going to be able to support this, but I want to explain why. For one thing, I think we've got a good system now. I mean, overall, the way we've done it before has worked well for us, in my experience, or my opinion, depending on how you want to look at it. For one thing, it's rare for us to have extra money at the end of the year, looking over a number of years, and so, and it's going to vary each time, and our economic situation's going to vary each time. I've been through it, everything from when we cut our 10 million, or 10% reserve all the way down to four because we went into a recession, and then years where, for one reason or another, we either underspent budget or got lucky. Generally, when we had money left over, it's because we underspent the budget. Either way, it's not common to have extra for us. So, it wouldn't be something that would be addressed in the way that's proposed every year. I do think that, that the timing and the way the staff has handled this have worked well for us. You know, being able to have any sort of suggestions for what to do, either an alert that we're short and we need to be looking ahead, both in our capital budget and in our regular budget, at knocking some things back because we, because our reserves are tight, is an important step for us to go through. It also is good timing if we are going to add a project or change the financing on anything so that that happens at the end, more or less the end of the first quarter of the year, so that projects can roll out after that. And I, I say that in general, looking at the, at the list that we have. What happened this year was that the council had some discussion and made it pretty darn clear to, to staff that we felt like the, that the balance was high and we wanted to knock that back. And that 20% figure came out, and so, staff developed a list of what I would call financial adjustments to, to address that in ways that they felt they'd heard from this, from the council. When you look at the, at the list that they did, the fleet building is a capital project, 3.2 million. We think maybe we can get it done, get more money from the state or otherwise get it done for less, but if we bond it, it will cost over a million dollars to bond it. So, planning right now, because we want to do that this year, that we would use this funding for it, means that we don't have to have it in the capital budget, and we're going into capital budget, we're already in it. And so, knowing that it wouldn't be there is timely right now. Putting money into the auto self-insurance fund, that's a different fund. If that's, if that needs, the staff made a case for it, if that needs a higher ending balance, this is a good time to do that. Again, we're going into budget. That way, we know it's covered, and we don't have to accommodate that in some other way. The hotel operations, again, we're needing to set aside money to cover that until we get that hotel sold. We don't do it now, and right now, up front, where are we going to get that money from? We're trying to, as a, as a staff and a council, be affirmative about our budgeting, not reactive when there's a crisis. Staff put that in there for good reason. The IT switch project, I can't remember whether that came out of the, the bonding budget or whether it's new. What I recall you describing was that it was important.
Yes, ma'am. It is in the CIP, but it would have been an operational funding project. So, by using surplus, it then would reduce the burden on the 25, 26, and 27 operating budget.
Thank you for that. The LMI maintenance rehab, it's important to staff. I mean, if the council wants to take these one at a time, which I really support, then we can have the little paragraphs like we have on the budget adjustments that we do and a little more discussion about each item. But if we're going to do, for instance, the LMI property maintenance, which staff recommended this was the place to put it, we need to vote on it soon so that the staff knows it's there and can plan for the year with that. So, we'll have to go someplace else if, if this council doesn't want to do it here. Anyway, it's there. And the paint truck rehab was, was pitched, it's $120,000. Prepayment of the fire radio leases was $605,000, which my understanding is would relieve their operating budget. They need to know that now so that they could adjust for whatever, if, if our purpose is to relieve their operating budget. And then, if, you know, there was some discussion about whether we would do T-PAC without quite a bit more information, it allows us to one at a time do that. But I guess, in my opinion, that's what this time period is for, to kind of shake it out, find out what the fund balance looks like, decide whether that's what we want to go with or not, and to affirmatively address whatever we think that balance would be. And so, I just don't think we need to make the change, that we've got a good system now. So, thank you for that, and I appreciate all the thought. I mean, all ideas are good ideas, but having that extra, as you touched on, the extra processing and item by item and stretching that all out, I just couldn't, couldn't make sense of it, actually. When you look at, at this process now, lining it all up, so we're making a decision against the whole CIP budget and the whole operating budget, makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Further comments? Councilman Dobler and then Councilman Banks? Okay, Councilman Banks?
Well, as we discussed, this new fund money, I think that there is no way that we're going to know what project may come about. And we have an opportunity right now to do a project. I think that's a good idea. I know that, man, I would really like the way Councilwoman Hiller gets figures, and I enjoy that. But I think that this process, right now, our process is good, but I don't think that there would be any way that we could know exactly what's going to happen and are we going to have enough to fund it. I think every year's a roll of the dice, so to speak. I think that this would be a, a good process for us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Here, what? Councilman Dobler?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Valdiviakala. Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we voting on this one at a time?
Yes.
We're not voting on the list at all. Just changing the policy. Changing the policy, okay, just want to make sure.
We have nine yes, with Councilmember Hiller voting no, the motion carries.
Motion carried, we'll move to action item 4E. Brenda, if you'll read, please.
E is an ordinance introduced by Councilmember Neil Dobler, authorizing establishment of an unassigned reserve fund comprised of excess general funds in accordance with the city's reserve policy.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor of governing body, this is virtually the same as a resolution that you just passed, but it's an ordinance, and I would stand for questions, as would staff, but the councilman, if you have some.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, seconded by Deputy Mayor Valdiviakala. Tell us when we're ready.
Ready to vote. Go ahead. All right, we have nine yes, with Councilmember Hiller voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, we'll move on now to action item, no, non-action items. Brenda, if you'll read.
A is a discussion of the proposed 2025 to 2034 CIP and 2025 to 2027 CIB.
City Manager?
Excuse me. This discussion, this presentation will be made to you and discussion led by David Jaketson of KTA and Derek Vapp of HNTB, which are engineering firms, and they will lead the CIP discussion by providing a presentation on the I-470 Topeka interchange study, and that will be followed by Josh McInarney, who is our budget manager. I was over 470 today, and I look forward to this project.
Gentlemen, thank you, when you're ready.
We ready?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and governing body. We thank you for the opportunity to come and, and give a brief overview of the... Okay, it's good? All right. Good evening, Mayor and governing body, and thank you for the opportunity to come and present this overview of the study we're currently work, and have been working on with Braxton this past year. The, this, the current study was in response to the city's wanting a more detailed evaluation of a new interchange in, in East Topeka on I-470 on the Kansas Turnpike. There was a study completed in 2016, which was a real high-level study that looked at estimated traffic and gross revenue that would be generated from a new Turnpike interchange. And, and, and this, this, that was completed before the Turnpike's decision to transition to cashless tolling, which we're on schedule to do this coming July. So, we needed to update the, the model that we'll be operating on starting later this year. And, but before I turn it over to Derek Vapp, our consultant from HNTB Corporation, we're going to answer, try, we're going to give this overview and then answer as many questions as we can you have this evening. But if you haven't read the report and have some questions in the future, we'd be more than happy to come back or work with Braxton to, to answer any future questions. So, the, I was just going to reference the, the slide that's up there now. As I mentioned, you could see that this was the preferred option from the 2016 study, and, and there's a toll booth on that connector road between the Diamond Interchange and the 29th Street connection. But Derek's going to step us through the current study now.
Thank you, David. As, as he mentioned, with KTA's transition to cashless tolling, one of the main things we wanted to look at in this updated study was, it gave us the opportunity to take another look at the interchange location alternatives. As he mentioned, the 2016 study resulted in that interchange south of 29th Street with the connector to, to 29th Street. But as, as they go to cashless tolling, you no longer need toll plazas or toll booths on those either ramps or on that connector road. So, that gave us the opportunity to take another look at one of the alternatives in the 2016 study, which was a, a connection at 29th Street, a, a standard Diamond Interchange. So, you see there in, in the presentation, the two stars are the two locations that we, we looked at. We looked at a, an iteration of alternative one, which was the preferred alternative from 2016. So, here are those two iterations of alternative one. That's that preferred interchange from the 2016 study, standard Diamond Interchange with a connector to 29th Street. You see the 1A is, is that preferred alternative. All that occurred here during this study was taking out that, that toll booth on that connector road. Alternative 1B was developed because there was some potential for that, for that parcel there to the north of the, the neighborhood there to have a, a potential water tower on it, and so, we wanted to, to adjust that and, and account for that situation. Alternative two here, as you can see, was a, a direct Diamond Interchange at 29th Street. The benefits of this, again, cashless tolling, with a cashless tolling lens, allowed us to shorten up those ramps. We didn't need toll booths on those ramps. So, this become, became a much more viable alternative under cashless tolling. One of the big benefits here is, you know, you get to utilize the existing bridge at 29th Street. You don't need a new bridge over, over the Turnpike as you do in alternative 1A and 1B. A couple other items to point out there is, there are some right-of-way impacts in the northwest quadrant of this interchange at alternative two, as well as a, a potential mitigation measure of a retaining wall to avoid the fire station in that southwest Here, you see the cost breakdown of those three interchange alternatives. I've highlighted the, the different alternatives and, and the total cost. Ultimately, you see there, alternate two interchange, that direct interchange at 29th Street, is the lowest total cost of about $18 million. And, and because of the reasons we talked about, the, the use of the existing bridge, not having to, to build a new bridge over the Turnpike, the lower cost, that ended up as, as the preferred alternative.
So, before Derek talks about details on this slide, the net revenue analysis, I just wanted to mention and talk about our business model at the Kansas Turnpike. We are toll-supported facility with no tax dollars, no state or federal tax dollars. So, we, we are, we, our goal is to be good stewards of our toll revenue when it comes to managing our system. So, that's why we take a hard look at, when we're asked to look at new interchanges, we have to apply the cost to the gross revenue to, to see what the net revenue result would be. And, and while we're talking about federal funds, that are, our, our system not using federal funds, there's a lot of grant money that's been out advertised over the last few years, and we, we reached out to the local federal highway administration in December of 2022 to get a better understanding of, of what grant funding might do to our system if it was used to construct a new interchange. And what we learned was, it would, it would risk the federalization of our system, and that's something that we don't want to do. So, any, any partnerships that we've talked to other folks about, and I'm sharing with you today, is that we can't have federal funds used to construct infrastructure on the Turnpike. I just wanted to share that with everyone.
So, as David mentioned, as we developed the costs that we saw on the previous slide, we went through the net revenue analysis. So, you see there, the top line, right? That's the, that gross revenue generated by this new interchange, the revenue that would be collected by that, the, the adjacent toll zones. The two, the two lines that I really want to focus on are, are the, the principal and interest payments. So, those are the, that's that cost that you saw from, from the previous slide. However, what's shown here, and this is the, kind of the base scenario of how we, how KTA has, has looked at new interchanges in the past, is, you know, this is that $18 million of alternative two if it were to be financed over 30 years. That's what you see there in that line, that first cost line. So, the next that I've highlighted there is the toll transaction processing costs. That's the cost that KTA typically incurs to do business, to collect those transactions. And, and that ultimately ended up in, in approximately $3 million per year, that, that net revenue, when you take the gross revenue, subtract it out. And, and one of the things that, you know, that this is, this has been the model of how to, how to look at these requests that come from other entities for interchanges in the past, but as KTA moves to cashless tolling, I know that David and, and the rest of the leadership team has, has taken a look at that policy.
Yeah, and, and really, just a little historic transition that we've been through also, because I, I've been with the Turnpike since there was a study done for a Topeka interchange in 2006. And in the, in the past, we would do these net revenue studies and see what the revenue projection was, and then subtract the cost. And if it, and if it didn't look feasible, we just would close the door on, on moving forward. But we're, we're trying to be better partners, and that started with our current long-term need study in 2015, where we're, we're open to partnerships and funding from, from partners to, to make these interchanges happen. But we're learning as we're diving into this transition to cashless tolling, and it, looking at that chart there, we knew, we knew that was a heavy lift with, with, when you see that negative net revenue, when you apply the, the assumptions that we're using as we transition to cashless tolling for the cost to collect. So, so, our board asked us late last year, earlier this year, to develop a draft policy to, to work with entities moving now and moving forward that want new interchanges along our system. And the, the, the transactions cost you seeing, if you've driven on 470 and you see our new toll zone that's going to work in our new system at, at 170, at mile marker 179 near 70, near 37th Street, if, if we were to build this new interchange, there would be another toll zone added just east of the location of this interchange. And so, these transaction costs are, are, on that chart is capturing the mainline traffic that go underneath those interchanges, whether they're using the interchange or not. But our policy moving forward that we're, we put in our draft policy is, we're not going to charge all the mainline traffic transactions to the equation. So, that leads us into this next table.
Yeah, so David hit, hit on it, the two, again, those two things that we wanted to look at. Obviously, when an entity comes and requests a potential interchange on the Turnpike, KTA is going to look at that, right? Do this net revenue analysis, and one of the things is that the capital costs are going to be asked to be covered by that entity. And so, that's what this, this table shows here, so zero dollars, assuming that that $18 million in this scenario would be covered by the City of Topeka. But as David was... But as David was explaining, those toll transaction processing costs have gone significantly down from that $23 million we saw on the last slide to $8 million. This number that you see here, that $8 million over the 10 years, is only accounting for the newly generated trips, the trips that are generated by this new interchange, and accounting for those costs to collect those tolls in this net revenue analysis. And so if you look at the bottom line, it ends up an estimated, you know, about $300,000 per year in positive net revenue.
So again, earlier I mentioned our business model, that we have to be good stewards when we're making investments on projects and new interchanges. So as any business has to deal with risk, we keep that in mind. I mean, we had our consultants perform this study, but there's always a chance the traffic projections won't meet what's estimated. That was the case with our most recent constructed interchange in Tonkinoxie over in Leavenworth County. So, but I'm just sharing that with you, because that's how we view these investments. But we're willing to take on the risk of managing and operating and covering those costs as we move forward, if the city elects to partner with us to build the interchange. And with that, I believe we're open for questions.
Councilman Miller.
I guess I'm going to just say plainly, who asked for this?
The cities requested that we do this study. All three of them I've been involved with since 2006, we reacted to requests from the city.
Okay. So the city asked for it. Did the citizens ask for that, that they need an extra interchange? Is this something that that... Okay. So if or no, I mean, I'm trying to get some context and some history on this.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
They've had several meetings, and some residents are for it and some residents aren't. A lot of the residents that are for it is when the new stretch of 29th Street went in, from 29th to 37th with the roundabout. They feel like if they open that up, then they're going to bring more businesses are going to come through there, and it's going to expand the businesses on California. Like any project, Marcus, you're going to have people that are for it and people that aren't. But that was a lot of the discussion.
Councilwoman McHale.
To me, as a person that drives that a bunch and only have that one side off there, it makes it to open up a lot more for options for our citizens. Sometimes when you only have that one option, it makes it really difficult if you're, you know, when you're coming into town, what way are you going to go? How am I going to figure this out and what's the best way to get there? So to me, it just gives our citizens another option on that side of town to be able to get things where they want to go and get things done, and hopefully keep here in Topeka and not be aggravated by, feel like they only have a few options to get around. I've been saying we need a few more of these around.
Councilwoman Hofer and then Councilman Duncan.
Okay. My first question has to do with this study. It's showing 2030 to 2060. So the earliest this could happen would be 2030?
We actually have a 2028.
Well, our papers say 2030.
I think that was.
That's for the financing component of it.
I think that's driven by the city's preference.
Then, just to clarify, currently in the CIP, there is a project identified in the 2030 year based on the 2016 estimated project cost that's in that $19.8 million. So that's what's currently in the CIP. We thought as part of the CIP, we would come to you and provide you with this update, because obviously the project cost is lower because of the move to the cashless tolling, because that allows you to change the geometry, shorten the geometry of those interchanges. It is purely a policy decision for this governing body where to put it in the CIP, whether to move it up, and how to identify the funds necessary, because KTA's position is if the city wants to move forward with this, the city needs to bear the cost, solely bear the cost of the construction.
Okay. Then my next question has to do with, are there any other cities that are looking at doing this? I mean, along the stretch in Kansas, are there any other cities that want to put in an additional, or are we the only one that is even talking about it?
No, we've been, we're active discussions with Shawnee County and the city of Auburn, south of Topeka.
Beyond that?
No, there's been interest, but no studies from Baser, Derby. Those are some of the ones where there's been some high-level discussions, but no active studies taken place.
Okay. Next question would be with the South Topeka interchange. I know the toll booths will go away.
Correct.
But would there, instead of putting a, above the drive-through, is it possible that they would just leave like the K-Tag lanes as they are where you come off?
No. We just, our board just approved last week, our last demolition project that included South Topeka and East Topeka and, well, yeah, through East Topeka. But no, those toll booths and gantries will be removed, and those lanes will be reconfigured. What we've constructed, 36 new toll zones along Main Line. The cashless tolling, the toll zones will be on Main Line. You'll either be electronic customer or a video plate recognition customer.
My company's been around a long time. We have one of the original, and I think I still may have one of them, credit cards that you literally hand it to them. They ran it through, and the first of our trucks would drop it off, and the last one would pick it up. So we've been going since probably in the 40s or before, whenever the KTA started. So got a long history with it, and I want to make sure it's still going to operate well.
It's going to be improvement, cashless tolling. I promise you that.
Yeah. That's all I've got for right now.
Councilman Duncan was up, and then Councilwoman McHale, and then Councilman Dobler.
So I want to go back to some funding. So any federal dollar puts you in jeopardy? I understand if it comes from the Department of Transportation or even certain grants, but you're telling me a federal earmark also puts you in jeopardy of being federalized?
Very good question, but I am by no means an expert on federal funding. But there could be a, my understanding, we have a meeting tomorrow, actually, with KDOT, the county, and the city of Auburn, because they are looking at some earmarks. So yes, I'm glad you asked that question, but I am no expert, so I'm not the one to answer that, but there could be opportunities.
That would be nice to know, if you could have legal at the Turnpike Authority take on me. Because here's my next question related to that. How does that apply to the city using funds for that same? In other words, if I as a city then go get it, I use federal dollars to pay for it, does that put the project also in jeopardy of being federalized?
Yes. That question was asked back in December of 2022 from Auburn and Shawnee County, and the interpretation we got from the federal highway administration was that that would also, that isn't an old avenue, it would also federalize us.
Okay. Again, regardless of the source. I mean, I know you didn't know the answer, but I guess, and you don't have to answer that. I guess I'm a little bothered, not you personally, but it seems like the Turnpike Authority should have a little more definitive answer to that, because the cities, as us look at these projects, and we talk to our congressional representatives who express interest, it'd be good for us to also have some communication with you and know, hey, it doesn't do us any good to ask if we can't actually use the funds.
I think it would be fair, David, for you to have an opportunity to talk to your counsel.
Yeah, I don't know. If you don't, that's fine.
No. What I'm saying is, somebody with knowledge of federal funding and the impact that it has on the Kansas Turnpike needs to tell us. We're just as, we need that answer just as much as you do. And it's more importantly, actually, because it impacts our entire system. The first thing they told us was, if you get federalized, you have to close every one of your service areas, because it's against the law to have commerce on interstate system. That's a pretty big impact, and there's several other impacts that we don't want to be threatened with.
Oh, yeah. No, I think it's a great policy that you don't want to put yourself in a position to be federalized. So, okay, well, that helps me, because now I may know some of the people to go ask.
We'll be at the table with you, trying to figure it out. I promise you that. But we can't answer those questions.
Sure. What I don't see is a scenario here, I see two scenarios for funding. The first is either you pay for it, or the second is either we pay for it. I don't see a what if we both pay for it scenario. And what the cost would be to you over that 30-year period?
We're paying to operate and maintain it. That's, so we are, we do have funds in this moving forward.
Right. I'm talking about the initial upfront construction. I mean, give us a scenario where you guys, if you paid for it, you couldn't make money, so that's off the table. I mean, that was the play, which I understand. If we pay for it, then you can generate revenue. Totally understand that, too.
If there was more traffic and more revenue, then our board would entertain the idea of...
Some split costs.
Yeah. But this, with an interchange at 177, 182, and 183, there's new trips generated, but it's being migrated from other locations. So it's hard to generate a lot of revenue at this location. And that's what the study shows.
Yeah. No, that's perfect. And my last question was, does any of this, does this study look at any land acquisition that would have to be undertaken? And is that built into this?
Yes. Good question. The program costs that we've identified, just under $18 million, includes design, right-of-way, utility relocations, construction, contract administration, and construction engineering. It's a program cost. So we needed to make that clear. So thank you for the question.
Maybe in there, I looked through it, but I may have missed it. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the answers.
Thank you.
Councilman Dobler, and then was it McHale? Okay, McHale.
I was kind of going to go on to the point of what the Councilman Duncan talked about shared. And I believe over time, you're talking about not enough traffic. I feel that maybe try and one out, working together, and you're going to see, and I've been saying this since you guys have gone cashless, or going to go cashless, you're going to see it from here to Wichita, a lot more exits popping up, because I've seen it in other places. I've seen it driving through Oklahoma, Illinois, up the East Coast where they have the cashless tolling. And I remember back when, 20 years ago, when I drove those areas, there weren't all these exits, and now there are, because they've opened up this cashless toll system. So I think you're going to see a lot more traffic overall, because when people have to decide, well, do I get on in Topeka and go down to Wichita, or do I take a non-toll road and be able to stop off at other places? So I believe you're going to see that traffic increase as more exits between here and Wichita and here in the Bonner Springs area open up.
There's some assumptions of growth within the analysis that we did. And again, that's their assumptions. They could be right, they could be on or high or low. It's just, it's an unknown. But we'll look at each request as it comes to us and do very similar feasibility studies to evaluate the feasibility for our business.
Thank you. Councilman Dobler.
Thanks, Mayor. David, thanks for the presentation. KTA is a great partner for the city. Just want to point out that we have a brand-new building setting at about, what, 38th and Topeka Boulevard, a little further down there. It's great. It has, as I understand, has the, part of the facilities are dedicated to the cashless tolling.
Correct.
Paul Center and so on. We appreciate that, being in Topeka as opposed to some other town, I can't remember the name of it, but west of us, I guess. So I guess my question is, in the second scenario where the city pays all of the capital cost, I think in some of the past discussions, the city has assumed some of the liability for whether or not there's more traffic generated by the new toll plaza, which in this case doesn't exist. You're saying in this scenario, the city would pick up the capital cost, and the KTA assumes the risk for whether the traffic projections are right or not, how many more trips are generated by that?
That's correct.
Over time, as well as paying the operational cost. Is that correct?
Yes. And the risk that cost of operations and maintenance of roadway and infrastructure will go up also.
Right. So even though it is a large capital cost, and we need to decide if it's worth it to us, just not having that long-term risk on the city's side of the ledger makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, he brought up one of the points I was gathering. Having been involved when this has come up before, you kind of lowballed it, but the issue is that you really aren't thinking that there's going to be enough traffic at this particular interchange to generate enough to have you pay for it.
Well, I'm not thinking it. That's what the results show.
Uh huh. And that had been discussed before, and that's one of the reasons why it maybe has taken this long, because it was like you all are going to have to pay for some of this if you want it. Our numbers don't run to put it in as part of the Turnpike system on our own. And some of the other discussions we've had, just so, just as kind of catch-up, where the idea was it would bring more business to southeast Topeka, access to Lake Shawnee, events that are happening there. It's, of course, possible to get there from I-70, but there was an interest in being able to get there from 29th Street. There were conversations about whether that would be too much traffic, you know, what would matter, also whether it really would attract more activity to businesses along the 29th Street corridor and help it, or whether it would just be easier to get on the interstate and go someplace else to go shopping. So kind of balancing out the pros and cons of, you know, right now, you need to get to Topeka Boulevard, you need to drive down 29th Street, and you'd be able to avoid that if the interchange were there. So it's been just some gentle conversations back and forth. But again, the volume for KTA to take care of the whole thing wasn't, I guess, still isn't there. And so that's one of the reasons it's getting pushed back to us to weigh out the cost-effectiveness of getting it done. That's it.
Councilwoman McHale.
Just curious, and you don't have to answer this today if you give us the numbers. What's the numbers between the 37th Topeka Boulevard one and Rice Road? How much traffic is generated just between those two points?
I don't have that right off.
I was saying, you could give us to that in the future.
I should have had that. That's a question.
You know, just, and some of my thinking is like, how much is perceived if you do put something at the 29th? Is going to be traffic that would go down to, let's say, California and up, now would be going to the 29th exit? So I think we're, okay. Okay. I just, a question I just thought of, and I may have been triggered by that report, but I think that could show a lot right there, just on those people there. Because I know my wife, every day you go to Compton, it's that exit to Rice Road and that Rice Road back to the Topeka Boulevard exit.
Yeah. So I just wanted to state, because there has been a lot of questions about, you know, the generation and how that was developed and assumed. We use the city of Topeka's travel demand model as a base, and they have two scenarios, a base land use case and an enhanced land use case. And so, you know, the numbers we've kind of been looking at, take into account that enhanced land use case. And you're right, some of the traffic shifts, right? Some that are getting off at South Topeka today will travel a little bit farther and get off on 29th Street. So we have made some of those assumptions in that model as we developed that travel demand.
Thank you. Councilman Hofer and then Councilman Banks.
Okay. I'm not quite sure who I'm directing this one to. What kind of timeframe are we looking at? Is this something we're looking at for this year CIP, or is this a year or two out?
I'll take that one. Currently, this project with the project budget developed in the 2016 study is in the CIP, and it's in for 2030. So it is purely a So, it is purely a policy decision for this governing body. If they want to move it up, they can. Once you move it into the CIB, then, then that forces hard decisions in terms of what items you're going to cut to be able to fit it in, because this would fall under your $27 million cap. Or are you going to decide to increase your cap to allow for the $18 million? And depending on where you put it in, that would be a, an adjustment to the amount of the inflation, because when Derek put the budgets together, he put the budget together for 2023 construction costs, and then has, has built into it five years of inflation for a 2028 cost. And, you know, and then, so that truly is a, the policy decision of the governing body in what year do you want to move it up? The other decision you can make is to leave it in and out year until you have a development that would warrant having this interchange, and then construct it or have the guys rerun the number, because if it's a Cabela's that's going in, that's going to change the revenue projections, and that's going to change the level of participation the KTA would have. That's just a far-fetched example. Does that, does that help in terms of?
It does, but at this point, we could let it sit in the CIP and not do anything about it for a couple of years, and some, like, Cabela's comes along and we decide we want to move it up.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's kind of where we're sitting right now.
Yes, ma'am. Entirely up, entirely up to the governing body where, where you want to put it into the CIP.
Okay, thank you.
I really appreciate the presentation. Living in that district and being the person that represents that district, I think that in many instances, we are not southeast Topeka District Four, is not given the consideration that many projects that are given in other areas in Topeka. I think that when we talk about foot traffic, how much traffic we're going to get to support, whatever we do there, I think that, given the opportunity, I think that District Four, southeast Topeka can generate just like any other area in this city. I think it's a great idea. I'm very excited about it. I look forward to the enhancement that I know is going to come to our district. I also, the only concern that I might have is that there is a fire station right near where the interchange is going to go. Having been stationed there for so many years, I know how the noise can be from the traffic generated on the interstate. Other than that, I think the project's great. I look forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Artese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Braxton, we did vote on this, correct? That's how it got in the CIP, right?
It was, it was included in the, in the CIP, and the council does every year vote to approve the CIP as, as presented. So, there is a project budget page in the, that was in a previous CIP, that this has been carried along for a few years, I think since 2016.
And, and, well, I, that's why I was wondering when, if you knew when. Has it been 2016, you think?
I think this, I think the study is 2016, so likely it would have been the 20, in 2017, right? So, probably included in the, in the 2018 CIP.
If staff can look that up and just let, let us know, I think it'd be helpful for the old council members and the new council members. I think it'd just be helpful. But that's how it got in the CIP. And, um, and neighbor, my, my neighbor down there, I think that interchange will benefit all of us, all the way from your, your neighbor, you're my neighbor, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm in three. She's in two. She's in one. It's, it's going to trickle down, because we don't have that. And I think that's what businesses are waiting for, is, is some of that, so that they know that traffic's going to slide through there. I just text a homeowner that's in that area, and I, and I asked him for his opinion, and he said, yes, he would be using that. I think there's going to be a lot of yeses out there. And I, and, and I think that there's a lot of people that, that are ready to move forward on it. I think this has been in the works long enough. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm so glad that Councilwoman asked that, because I was stumped. So, this is me only being into my second term. I would ask, is there the possibility, Braxton, if you have somebody on staff, or newbies, or those of us that need a better grasp of this, to go out and, and for us to look at the location? Because I, I'm sorry, I'm not a math person, but I'm saying, would that be something that your staff would be able to if we were, if council people needed individuals?
I would be, be happy to take you out to 29th at this location to show you the approximate location of the proposed interchange on that alternate two.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Duncan, then Councilman Dobler?
So, first of all, I, I thank you for being here. This study is very helpful, and it's sort of, I mean, I doubt it's going to change. Maybe it will, but it looks like we kind of know what the path would be if we want the interchange, which is, which is helpful for us. I guess for me, there's three pieces of this, and one we have now in front of us, and the other two are, it would be nice if, and I've, over the next year or so, we could actually look at what the economic development impact of this would be. I see some people from the chamber in here, they can probably assist with that, because I think that's an important piece. If, if part of that investment is, like it to pay off, or what can it open up to, to the economic development piece? And then the third piece of that is, what is the community development piece, right? How will it really help people who expand that area for housing and improve the community? And so, we don't have those two pieces, but I think they're very attainable. And so, it'd be nice if the next year, if we can kind of put that on our radar, to just look at that, so that we can then do, my last comment, we, we've worked really hard the last couple of years to clean up the CIP, right? A few years ago, staff went in and found some old projects and reassigned them, and we got those off the bottom, low-hanging fruit, and we've worked hard to make sure that if it's in there, we're going to do it. And it'd be nice, not this year, but by next year, if we could make that decision with this project, and know, okay, it's either in here for the long haul, because we're going to get it done, or, the first study was 2006, maybe after 18 or 20 years, we need to make an actual decision about what we're going to do. So, I think if we had those pieces, it's a much easier decision to make a year from now as we look at this again. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dobler?
Thanks, Mayor. So, I'll add maybe the fourth piece and the fifth piece to Councilman Duncan. You know, as we look back on the big projects along the interstate that we've done in this community over the last probably 30 years, they've generally been a cooperative project between, you know, Pope Quincy is, is us and KDOT, City of Topeka and KDOT. But if you go back further, I-70, 470 interchange was a city-county KDOT project. Oakland Expressway was a city-county KDOT, KTA project. I think this is a city-county project. I think somebody mentioned Lake Shawnee, it's going to make it easy to get to county facilities, and I guess we're in the county, right? So, I think over, over the next few months, as we look at this, we, I love the idea of looking at what the development picture is. I happened to be in a discussion a couple of weeks ago with a woman that represents Panasonic, you know, south of DeSoto, and I asked her, what, what's the impact of Panasonic? And she said they draw a 50-mile radius from the plant. 50 miles is just west of Topeka. So, definitely east Topeka, and I know we've started looking at, at some areas, you know, 29th and Croco and other areas where development could happen. I think this is a piece of that puzzle, but we need to have partners. We can't do it alone. We need to know, yeah, if development's going to ultimately help us fund this, we need to figure out what that looks like. So, a lot of what-ifs, but exciting project. I support it, as long as we can figure out how to adequately fund it. And thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, if I, if I may, Josh just whispered to me that this project has been in the CIP since 2016.
I can remember having this conversation way back when I first came on the council, and was excited about it then, because I saw the possibilities for that portion of the city of Topeka. But beyond that, as is suggested, I think it won't just serve the east side of Topeka. I think it will become an attractive opportunity for anybody coming in and out of the city, or within the city, traveling from one side to the other. I, I do like the comments with regards to the economic development and the impact and the impact on the neighborhoods, because I think that's important for us to consider, because we do have a need for additional housing. We have always struggled with making sure everybody in this community has access to everything that this county and city provides. Access has been always a struggle, and this just helps improve that access for everyone. So, for me, I'm hopeful that from Councilman Duncan's mouth to the county commission's ears, that, that we see that opportunity to, to collaborate in, in a number of ways, to see the real possibilities for this, to make, I think, a significant change to this community. So, I'm encouraged that the conversation has come back. I do remember being disappointed when it kind of got quiet, went quiet, but I am encouraged that the quick conversation has started again. So, as you, as we move forward, and you move forward with answers to questions that we've posed, periodic updates would be appreciated, because I don't think anybody wants this to walk away silently. We want to do everything we can to see all the positive opportunities. Councilman Dobler?
Thanks, Mayor. Not meaning to dominate the conversation here, but seems like a, an ideal topic for the Infrastructure Committee to keep on a, a discussion on a regular basis, so maybe we can, not every, not every month, Sylvia, but every other month. Thank you.
I'm the chair, I, I accept that, but I hear you.
Okay. City manager, and then Councilwoman Hiller?
So, Mayor and governing body, this, this really, I'd like to spend 45 years doing this, but this is an exciting discussion, because here's what I know. If you place it in the right place, if you make the right investment, it will grow your city. It will grow businesses around your interchange, and it will help, if you look at it, if you look at it really in detail, it will help relieve some other traffic issues you have in other spots. So, this is a good project for you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman?
Just wanted to comment back to the design, that, you know, you explained that cashless tolling allowed you to do something different with the design, and I personally think that the, the alternative to, the, the new one that you have, is a tremendous improvement location-wise, which really, this is the first time we've seen it, so I don't know that it's been discussed much, if any, in east Topeka. But one of the things we talked about before with these ones that were way out, the, the interchange was in the middle of nowhere, is that most of us, when we're driving on the interstate, if we can't see civilization from the eye, from the, from the signs, we keep going to the next one where we can see development close to the, the interchange. And this move to get it all the way up on 29th Street, albeit on the, on the east edge, of course, but right in the, in the mill, where you could see, I think will really improve the activity and people using it.
Yeah, I really want to credit the city for that.
Okay.
We looked at several options previously. They wanted to look again at that, so we can't take the credit, that's credit to the city staff.
Well, that, that really looks appealing, and there were also issues with people who lived along that long extended route, and just exactly how it would plug into 29th, or maybe go to California also. Just, it all kind of wobbled back and forth. This one looks much stronger to me, so thanks for that.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Councilwoman Hiller, there were at least two town hall meetings. So, you're, you're saying that you didn't understand if, if that had got out? That's how we heard from the residents. There was at least two town hall meetings.
No, the new one.
Okay.
This new one. Yeah, we, there were lots of meetings and discussions before, but the new one is, I think it's first time, it's the first time I've seen it.
Right, I think that is correct. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we had town hall meetings.
Oh, yeah, I know. No, it was just the new one.
Good discussion. I think you've got a feel from the governing body about our interest, and I hope that's encouraging for you as well. So, look forward to moving forward in, in the steps that we need to take.
I had one more turnpike update for Councilmember Dobler. We have a U-Bus project this year south of Wichita, starting in July.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. Thank you, Director. Okay, next on the, no, I'm sorry.
Is that the end of our CIP discussion? Because I have a CIP question.
Okay, good.
Before we move on.
That's the only thing I had on here.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and governing body. Thanks for, thanks for KTA on their presentation tonight. Before we get into kind of the open-mic night for the CIP, this is our fourth presentation. We don't have anything scheduled, just obviously asking questions for you guys. We also wanted to disclose changes we made from the first iteration from the book that we distributed in February, and that's in your packet, but I'll just read through the changes briefly. We, we pushed Elevation Parkway out of the CIP. That allows us to, the pushing it out allows us to raise the 2025 water main replacement program and the 2025 wastewater lining replacement program. And then we also reduced the curb and gutter half-cent sales tax programs from 1.25 million to $900,000 per year. And then we switched out of the CIB. We changed the firm program to being bond-funded rather than operating, using operating funds to relieve some pressure off the general fund. And then lastly, the zoo master plan, since we pushed out some Jado projects in last year's CIP with, most notably, the 17th Street project, that allowed us to pay the zoo on a faster timeline and to fit their capital needs, so that change is reflected in your packet. But, and then, so that's all we really have scheduled for tonight, and we just wanted to leave it up to you guys for any questions you had for designated staff members.
Any questions for Josh? Okay. Thank you for the update. Did you see some? Oh.
We'll have questions, but not for Josh, so.
Oh, okay. Okay. Can he be excused?
Yeah, no one else has questions. Yeah, I didn't have a question.
Well, I'll stay up here if there's any financing questions on it, but, and we can have people come up, too, so.
Okay. Councilman?
So, where are we at in this process? I guess that's my, my general question. I mean, when do we plan to vote on the final CIP? What is our timeline? For those of us who might have amendments or suggestions, when would you like to start getting those? Like, next week, the week after? I mean, I guess I'm just asking where we're at, so we can all plan accordingly the next few weeks.
My thought was, like, we're ready to receive, if you have any amendments, changes, we'd, we're ready to receive that now. So, and we were hoping to vote on it sometime this month.
Yeah, Josh is correct that this would be the time for any supplementals. What he outlined tonight would be supplemental one, which we will publish to the website, similar to past years of, of how the book changes through the process. So, to answer your question, now is the time, because we'd really like to get this book processed and complete as much as possible, so then we can change gears and get ready for operating budget coming up.
Okay, perfect. No further questions? Okay, thank you. Michelle, while you're sitting there, I take this opportunity, if we may, before you sneak out of here, to thank you for your years of service with the city of Topeka. You've been an invaluable asset since I've been on this council, and I really have relied upon your steady hand in our finance department. You have an extremely engaging character, and no question about your skills and abilities in the finance department. I want to thank you on behalf of the city, and for everything that you've done for this governing body as we move forward and have those tough questions, as you always seem to have the answers for, because I know this is your last council meeting, and wish you well in your next assignment, and I know that you're not leaving our community, so I'm glad that you're still staying in Topeka.
Thank you, sir. It's been an honor and a pleasure.
Thank you.[1796.21] Okay, thank you. Okay. Is that all of our CIB? Okay. We'll move on now to public comment. A number of people signed up. I'll call them in the order that they, we were, they were received. First, we have Mr. Paul Lastley. Mr. Paul Lastley.
I think you know me. I've been here before. I just wanted to get an update on what, before it was talking about an ordinance to help us. Is that anywhere still on the books or in the plans in the future or what?
Sir, you have to be more specific in your address.
Okay. Well, last year, I came up here trying to find out about this ordinance on our trees at this trailer park. Is everybody familiar with who I am now? I mean, this lady here, she told me good advice. She said, Ms. Hiller, that I should go to the courts. We went to the courts and every time we go to the courts, LLC shuffle takes place. So then it's for nothing. We can't get anywhere. Without an ordinance, we can't get anywhere. And all we're asking for is an ordinance that requires them to put the trees down to a safe level. These trees are in between trailers that should never have been planted there in the first place and are the wrong kind of trees if they was going to put some in there. Those trees that could exist in there without danger to anybody, but these trees are 50 years old. They're way too high and trimming is not going to get it. I mean, I don't care how many arbers they'd call in there and say, oh, climate change, it's going to affect all the air in the city. That's not, that's stupid. I mean, that's ignorance. I mean, what is that? 10 acres? 10 acres of trees, I don't think is going to fry Topeka if they top them trees down to a safe level. And we don't have any, we can't force them to do that, you know? We got people in there that are afraid to come down here, you know? Yeah, they're afraid to come down here, especially the Hispanics, because they know they're going to, they're going to get retaliated against, you know? I've been retaliated against so many times, I don't care anymore, you know? And it's a public safety issue, you know? Public safety is a right. It's not a privilege, it's a right. That's what I think. And we don't have that. We don't, we don't have any kind of protection. Every time we get ready to go to court, they, you had another LLC, you know? And people say, well, why is that? Who are these people, you know? And nobody knows. This last one that we got now is only like a couple of weeks, come in, just soon as I filed loss in the courts, like she asked, you know, here they go, change up. So that's 80, they raised the price at the courthouse for getting somebody on, on small claims court from like 50 some dollars, now it's 80 some dollars, you know? So I'm at that every time. And if I go rent equipment out of town, bring equipment in there, oh, that's my trees, they say. You know, they're, they own the lot, but I own the trailer, okay? I can't protect myself because he says, don't touch my trees. Get insurance. You know how much they want? $50,000. He wants you to get $50,000 worth of insurance on your trailer, you know? They want, everybody's supposed to have the same kind of window coverings in their trailer, you know? You're not, you're not allowed to just have any kind of, you, they all got to be the same. Y'all got to have $50,000 worth of insurance. The list goes on and on, okay? And when you check what the ordinances that they have in this, in this town, it's all against the tenant, you know? It's for the property owner. We have no, no protection whatsoever. We get retaliated. They want to run us off so as they can do something else with it, you know, like make a RV camp or something like they're doing next door, you know? But like I said, we, we have no place else to go, you know? I've been there 10 years. I've got everything I own in that, in that place. I, I, I just, we're within. Without an ordinance, we're screwed.
Thank you for your comments, sir. They've been heard and hopefully you'll have somebody contact you.
Do what?
Hopefully you'll have somebody contact you.
Right.
Deputy Mayor?
May I speak to my colleagues about this?
Not, not during this portion.
Not during, not to him, but just, I will be in contact with them.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Move on to second person, Mr. Mark Loads.
Thank you, Mayor. It's Lotus.
Lotus, thank you for the correction.
We saw each other at the parade on Saturday.
Oh, okay.
For St. Patrick's. To the council, I am fed up with the way I've been treated in this town and I'm here to say some harsh words to each and every one of you. In the third district, my representative, I'll start with you.
Sir, you can't address individual council members.
I won't. I haven't spoken her name, Mr. Mayor.
You've identified her clearly.
She's my representative.
I, I understand that.
I live in her district. I'm identifying myself.
I understand that, but you make your comments without reference to any of the council members.
These comments are directed at the entirety of the city council.
You've already pointed one out, so don't do it again.
Okay. You don't need to correct me. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I make my comments now?
Even though you make corrections on occasion.
Okay. Shame on you, city council. Shame on you. The chief of police in this town was selected by the city council. He answers to you. When I call the chief of police, because my next door neighbor is an insane person who throws rocks and sticks and stones and bricks and logs and chicken at me, and the police come to my house and they do nothing, and they do not enforce the noise ordinances in this town, so that my pretty little girlfriend can sleep at night and go to nursing school at Washburn and get good grades and become a nurse and work overnight through a COVID pandemic in this town, and they do nothing, and I call you and no one answers, no one calls me back, no one speaks to me, when the chief of police doesn't respond, when the sergeants in this town write me letters and say that they cannot find the crazy little old woman who lives next door to me as a suspect in these crimes caught on video, there is no one on this council who is holding anyone to account in this town for the most minor of offenses. And that is why many people in this town, up to and including employees of some of the finest, longest standing establishments in this city, die at the hands of drug dealers pushing opioids and cocaine, cutting fentanyl with weed. And we have to watch as our fellow citizens get buried in this town because simple ordinances cannot be enforced, because no one is being held to account. And Mr. Mayor, as a former chief of police, as a former law enforcement officer, when I call your office and I ask for you to call a citizen back because he's having a problem and months go by, months, and no one calls me back in this town, shame on all of you. If you did not swear an oath to do your job and you don't have the courage to do your job, the dignity, the righteousness, the self-respect to stand up and hold someone accountable in this town, to do their job like fill a pothole, so that I don't have my suspension blown out, so that I don't have to call an Uber to get up here, so that I don't have to listen to an Uber driver tell me to tell you to fill the potholes in this town, while you kiss each other's watusis and settle with the KTA, who by the way, started collecting money when they started building that highway and said that it would pay for itself and be over and done with, tolling finished within a matter of years. It has now been more than 20 years. And every citizen who leaves this town to go east for work has to pay more money to get out of town if they want to get to their job, and then they got to pay more money to get back. And all that money leaves this town. We should sign those highways over to the federal government. They've been built already. Let the federal government maintain them. They have the tax dollars. They're trying to give them to the city. They want us to maintain the highways. They want things to get done. Do your jobs, and if you don't want to do them, I'm almost out of time. If you don't want to do your jobs, resign tonight. Do not wait like the chief of police and ignore my phone calls and never call me back. Resign tonight or do your jobs. You're welcome.
Next person we have is Rocco Savino. Rocco Savino. Rocco Savino. I don't, maybe she's, here she is. Danielle Twimlow?
Hello. Thank you. My name is Danielle Twimlow. Thank you for having me up here. I am just coming to speak about ordinance, a policy that's in place that I came across as just kind of being a, lack of better word, subjected to some inequity from it, but not on my part here, you know, wanting anything changed with what is happening with my situation, but that we clearly need to be looking at this moving forward. So apparently, I received a phone call last year, February, that I had an abnormal water bill, abnormally high water bill. It was super courteous to get the phone call that something must be wrong. And, you know, teenagers grow up, move out of the house, not using that downstairs basement very much, and that toilet was just running. So one month, I had an abnormally super duper duper high bill of nearly $300. Husband quickly fixed it and as you can see consecutively, just immediately went down, right? And my usage has been very minimal ever since. But because of the policy that we have in place, it states that we average a water bill for a full year, using anywhere from December to February, an average in that timeframe, and that that will kind of generally, the word generally, which leaves it up to maybe so, maybe I'll use something different, which is what I found for the whole year before, it clearly wasn't December through February that was used as my average, because I was also having several high bills. So for the last year, I've been paying over $250 for a full year because of one month having a super high bill that then trickled down into that second little month period. So I was alerted of this problem, immediately remedied, remedied it by fixing it. However, nothing changed, right? And so I'm sitting here thinking, how many landlords don't show up when a phone call's made? How many times are these drafty houses during December through February running their water so that their, their pipes don't burst? Or how many leaks there are? Or how many times it's hard to wait two and three months for a landlord to come fix the leaky toilet because someone might not be able to do that? And then they're stuck for an entire year or more. I'm, I'm over a year now, even though it says generally April to April, of spending over $250 a month for my water when I am not using anywhere near that amount. So I have the privilege of being able to be like, okay, this is an inconvenience, but not everybody has that. And where I was alerted to that fact, I also wonder, are we doing that as a consistent practice? Are we able to alert people when there are these abnormal changes? And when someone is alerted and does fix the problem, how are we resolving that? How are we helping assist people who might not have the opportunities I do to make that change or to cover that cost for over a full year in my utilities? And it makes me think long-term, how much are we creating these problems of people not being able to afford their monthly utility bills, which we don't, I'm not getting started on, on the water? And, you know, we are, we are setting people up to not be able to maintain because we have these inequitable policies in place. So my hope is, is that we're looking at more intentional ways of looking at policies and procedures to look how we could correct them, make them more equitable, and help people.
Danielle, do you need more time?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I, I ramble, so thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. Henry McClure.
Good evening, Your Honor. How are you?
Good evening, thank you.
Cheers. I was at the State House the other day and I got to watch one of our city councilmen address a committee. And I thought, man, what a beautiful process. The state of Kansas lets a guy just walk up and talk. I know that he's got a gig there, but the, but the state of Kansas actually gives more opportunities for public involvement than the city of Topeka. We've got to change the rules and regulations of the city council to where if you're in a meeting, you actually can, a committee meeting, you can actually give your two cents. Now today, this was an interesting meeting, watching the KTA, because actually I came here to talk about the MTPO. Because if the MTPO were in place and functioning and taking public involvement, when I was on the Metropolitan Planning Commission, we were the first MPO before Vic and Ted broke us up. We actually had public involvement. And all the answers, all the answers one of your compadres here wanted would be in front of you. Because it's the federal law. You're supposed to have the MTPO to even qualify for the federal funds. Now this fix is easy. I hate to jinx it because, you know, my boy over here about retaliation, he ain't all wrong. But that road, putting that, an exit there would be one of the best economic development projects we can do. I can tell you down in Auburn, the county is on board. They've got it all figured out. They can fund it. And it is a city-county job. And that would be in District Two. I know I'd support that. It is a city-county project. But you got to get the public involved with the MTPO. I know where we could find $3.5 million today in economic development money to fund this project. I can, I can find you that. But all you have to do, the gymnastics is really pretty simple. You just allocate the federal dollars in different projects and make sure that the city and county funds for the project don't have any federal funds in them. This thing's a no-brainer. Hope you get it done. It would also be good, because if, one day I'd like to meet this Bring the Boulevard Committee back. Tell me when the next meeting is. Because the MTPO ought to be involved with the Bring Back the Boulevard. Because if you really want it, well, we could use some federal funds to bring back the Boulevard, not put the burden on the few. Thanks. I was easy. Look, didn't raise my voice, didn't use any swear words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more person, Esther Noble.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City council member. I've tried to organize my thoughts here, so I hope I don't mess up. My name is Esther Noble. Me and my husband have lived in Topeka for approximately 15 years. We live on northeast Jefferson Street. It's considered a low-income It's considered a low-income neighborhood. It's a nice place to live. Me and quite a few of the neighbors, we kind of look out for each other, you know, keep it safe, keep eye on your house, and sort, that sort of thing. The reason I'm here this evening is due to the homeless encampment located in our neighborhood, right across the street from a nursing home, over there at Grant Street, right next to pump station number one, it's a sewage treatment plant. The city recently bought the land next door, that's where the homeless encampment is. It's a big, huge lot there. They bought it from one of my neighbors, I'm not going to mention his name because he's not here. They forced him to sell the property to him as an eminent domain. He kept the property up pristine, but now, now we've got the homeless encampment coming up on that. They told him the city was planning to build a new sewage treatment plant there. That property now has an encampment there. Well, I do have compassion for the homeless. I understand that people are suffering hardships and they need someplace to go. And I know you're trying to decide how to do that, and it's a, it's a big situation. I know every state in the United States is dealing with this. Topeka Mission offers a fantastic restructuring program for people. It's one of the best ones in the United States, I understand also. I wish more people would take advantage of that and try to help themselves. I know not everybody's able to do that, due maybe mental illness or disabilities and such. I also realize that you're not allowed to put mobile homes on properties without occurring violation penalties, besides the mobile home parks. But you can, you can put a tent up in the middle of the neighborhood right now. Me and my husband are potential home buyers in the near future here, but do we want to invest our money in a home just to see that investment decrease if a homeless encampment goes right across the street on city property? Would it be a good idea in the future, maybe, to move the homeless to one central location or a couple of central locations in order for their safety, our safety, and the police's safety also? I think the main thing is we want to keep the pact, the citizens that pay taxes and our local businesses here in Topeka. We don't want them to leave, whether I leave or not Topeka, into buying a home in a more rural area. I'd like to see this place prosper. Thank you.
Those are all the persons I have signed up for public comment. We'll move now to announcements. Madam Clerk, did you have something, City Manager? Yeah. Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have a special meeting scheduled on April 8th for City Manager interviews. That is located at the Sunflower Foundation. It will be a nine-hour executive session. There will also be a meet and greet, public meet and greet at the Hotel Topeka from 5:30 to 7:00. And then on April 9th, we will have a governing body meeting. We will have one proclamation for Law Day. Presentation includes the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board Annual Update. We have one noise exception resolution on the consent agenda. Action items include a public hearing and ordinance at McFarland Farm Master Owners Association, resolution for requesting additional funding for Hotel Topeka, and then a resolution, two resolutions, amending the CIP. And then we have a discussion, so I apologize, the resolution for Hotel Topeka will be a discussion first, and then we'll continue discussion on the CIP.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, governing body, U.S. Department of Energy has approved the city's energy efficiency and conservation block grant application for $176,910. This grant will be managed by our Housing Department and used to assist low-to-modern-income households in the Justice 40 target area. We should be able to provide 10 homes with weatherization that will help their energy efficiency and reduce energy costs.
Okay. When will the city get those funds? My question is. Thank you, sir. Okay, we move to the governing body. Councilwoman Hofer? Do you get to start?
Okay. Tonight, I really just want to make sure everyone knows that several of the Polquency Viaduct utility projects have started. There are going to be more street closures. I'm concerned whether the neighbors will know or not, so I want to make sure that we do a good job of notifying people. There was a sign-out today, and we've remedied it, but it said that First Street was going to close as of Friday, but come to find out that their traffic flow has not been approved yet. So it's been put off for a couple weeks, or however long it takes to get that approved. And that closure is going to put a hardship on everyone down in that area who has to get semis in and out. It'll affect the fire, the police, trying to get to, anyone ambulance trying to get to us. The bus barns are down by there, it's going to affect them, the UPS trucks, people going to hills. There's a lot of people it's going to affect. So I just want to urge us to do a good job of getting the word out. And for those that don't know, the website for Polquency has been updated. They've added a updated plan of what the new viaduct's going to look like. They've also put in the location of all the projects, 2 through 7, so people can get a better idea of where it's going to happen. But one thing it doesn't show is whether they're going to be fully closed or two lanes still open. So we still have a lot of work to make this happen, and these projects are, some will be done in, one will be done in November, the rest in January, February timeframe. So it's, that's a long time to deal with this, and I'm still having problems trying to figure out how I'm going to get to my actual office coming from the west side. Because right now, getting to First Street, taking that exit, the sign detour really isn't signed, and people are cutting through on Taylor and Third Street instead of going down to Clay and Fifth Street. And there's people who are not good with their driving, and they're zooming through without any regard for who's living there, what time it is, two cars on both sides of the street, and they're having that similar problem on 21st Street right now, with people trying to go south of it when I assume the bridge is already closed. So I'm going to ask that people drive responsibly and watch where they're going. Be considerate of the neighborhoods you're driving into. I'm trying to take the Third Street exit so I don't have to go through the neighborhood. So if it's a matter of finding a slightly different route, that you can be considerate of the neighbors, please do. I mean, we've all got to get through the construction periods, and this is just the start of the construction season. When that gets started on Topeka Boulevard, there's going to be closures, there's going to be narrowing of lanes. So I'm just asking for people to be patient and careful with their driving. I don't want to see people getting wrecks, anybody get hit. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Hiller?
Well, just to piggyback and reinforce what she said about Polquency, it's, we share a lot of that traffic way. So thanks for speaking up on that. And the only other thing I have is to personally thank Rochelle again. Thank you for all you've done, and you can come back. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Folks probably saw in the KSNT news about the issues that, the challenges that we continue to have in District 2 with the encampment that was just talked about a few moments ago. I do want to say thank you to the mayor and for others that participated in the meeting that we had yesterday about this. Specifically, I just need to get some stuff unloaded, and that would be for folks that have told me for weeks and weeks, like three to four weeks, that there was maps circulating out there. And I just want to say I apologize because I was wrong in believing that there was not, but there is somewhere. There's, there's somewhere out there. And, you know, hopefully we can get to the bottom of this, because I think that the folks, especially in Oakland and swatches of North Topeka, whose residential areas may have included those maps for unsheltered to go and camp on, you know, I, I think that you deserve some kind of transparency, and I don't know what that looks like yet. I do know that I'm very adamant, and I think that there is support on this governing body to tighten up the no camping ban ordinance. And I think that people need to under-realize, and I keep saying this over and over and over again, but I'm going to keep saying it, is that the city is working and is challenged, like every other municipality across this United States, with increasing levels of poverty, with a broken mental health system, and with the lack of affordable housing. We have no rent controls that I know of that can keep these prices from raising and raising, and we don't have enough housing to put folks in at this time. But by the same token, I want to say this, we should all feel a sense of some kind of social contract when we live in a community and in a neighborhood. And I serve a low-to-moderate-income district, and for those that don't know, I'm going to remind them again, that is a working-class district, that is a fixed-income district, that is a poor district. That's, that is a higher number of, of who I serve. And so the protective mechanisms that I will continue to abide by to protect this district from the inundation over the years, over the decades, where they have been failed by the municipal government, where they have been failed by the social service agencies that help the unsheltered, where the system has failed all of us because the system itself is breaking. And I, I know people don't want to hear that, but they're going to hear it. Because the social determinants of health, because racism is a public health crisis, because the mental health crisis that we're going through, all of that has to be a part of the dialogue that we have at this governing body pit, that we, I call it a pit, but it's a, it's a nice pit. So, so when we have all of this trash, tons and tons and tons of trash, defecation, public health and safety risks that continues to bleed into my district and other districts, I'm going to push back as hard as I can, and shame on whatever social service agencies were giving out those maps. Because it is not the neighborhood's fault for what is happening. It is not their fault. And I told them that, it is not their fault. And I want to say one other thing. We're saying mental health is the reason, addictions are the reason. We obviously know it's an affordable housing issue is, is, is what the methodology, methodology has shown, those that are able to get to functional zero have shown. It's an affordable housing crisis first and foremost. But while we are expected to have this compassion for the unsheltered, I'm also looking at the housed community in any number of our districts that also have just incredible mental health issues, financial issues, that are bleeding out, but they are not creating a public health crisis with what we're looking at. And I'll just use one more example, because I'm on a roll now. My grandparents grew up in the, both sets of my grandparents came from the most poverty-stricken areas of Mexico that you could imagine. No, you probably can't imagine it. You probably can't imagine it. So my grandmothers grew up with dirt floors, and they cleaned and swept their dirt floors. And they didn't have junk and feces and everything all over, and they had horrific stories that would make most people buckle under what they went through, with the trauma that they went through in that country and coming over to this country. So I'm not going to buy into having just that sense of compassion for the unsheltered and not have it for my housed residents, some of them barely hanging on themselves. So it has to be an and-and, it's not going to be an either-or. But to the district that I serve, I apologize, because you knew something was happening before I did. And shame on those who are sharing information and putting the onus on our neighborhoods because it is not their fault. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say to Rochelle, good luck to you, and thank you for everything that you've done, and thank you for leaving Josh in a good place, because we're going to rely on him. And sometimes when we make decisions, they're not always, they don't always turn out how we want them. So if that happens, you know that you can turn around, turn it around and come back. There's no place like home. So don't, don't forget that, okay? Mr. Mayor, I wanted to say to all of my colleagues, I don't know what's going on, but I have had, one week and I had 40 complaints, and this week I've added probably another 12 more. We've got people that are bringing in campers and, and doing things from the homeless and everything, and I want to, I want to express to my colleagues to please check your emails. I'm getting, starting to roll over and getting some of your calls. I know there's a East Topeka South and East Topeka North, haven't met for like years. That's all I'm going to say. And I, we probably got about 20, 20 complaints out of there to try to clean, clean up our area, and, and I'm grateful, I'm really grateful because that area needs it. But to my colleagues, I would encourage them, please answer your phone, please answer your emails, if nothing else, let them know. To the city manager, I know that our emails were down at one time. I don't know, I'm, I'm having trouble with mine, because people are telling me, they tried to email me, they tried to email me, and it didn't go through. I don't know what's going on, but I'm starting to get a lot of complaints. I don't mind it, that's the job that I signed up for, and I know we all handle complaints in a different way, but think about our colleagues, because we're, you know, I, I just want to say to my colleagues, thank you for the job that you are doing, because right now, this is the busiest I've ever seen, and I've been in this seat for a little, little bit, that we, we are swamped, you know, with hiring the new city manager, with getting the new, new department heads, and then with all the issues and the viaduct, and, I mean, we're hit from every example, so let's make it easy on each other and, and try to make sure that we look out for each other and care enough to make sure that not one person is catching the load. And I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I don't know if people are calling me because Spencer won't answer his phone, or they know that I'm going to, you know, I'm, I'm going to answer that right away call, or that Spencer doesn't have the answer, but he's got a good attorney, I know that. So that's all I'm saying. And, and Mr. Mayor, thank you for all that you're doing as well. I know you're busy with the homeless and, and different meetings, and, and we've got a lot on our plate. We do, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Being a new person on our council, I rely a lot on my colleagues, a lot. And I go to them, I always answer calls, I always call back if necessary, but I appreciate the support that I've gotten from my colleagues on this governing body. Without it, I'd probably have less hair than I have right now. But I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues, and certainly I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Kell?
So we kind of brought up a little bit, the, the traffic concerns will be kind of kicking up a little bit with, as construction of the roads, repairs and all that kick up here shortly, so please take your time when you're going through those areas. Those men and women are trusting that you're driving safe and driving aware, so please take your time going through those areas. As was brought up before, potholes, please use C Click Fix. You can report a lot of issues there, it gets it into the system, we can figure out things and get things done. things and get things done that way. I'm not sure, and I've looked, do we have a traffic map in, on the city website to show where projects are going on and where things are shut down? Can anyone answer?
I think generally, when we have a traffic disruption, an email is sent to the governing body, let's...
I'm saying, I'm talking about citizens so they can, you know, we're out of a lot of stuff going on here pretty soon, so I think it'd be nice if we have a map up on, on the city website that shows what areas may be completely shut down, what areas are going to be one lane when it's normally two lane, things like that, that we can look at. And then, as the councilwoman said, if you have issues, please call us, please email us. Sometimes we don't see everything that's going on in our area. I try to drive throughout town and go different routes every single time I go to work, or go in somewhere else. So that's how I kind of find out about certain things and ask questions, but if there's an issue or concern, please email us, please call us. This way, we can try to help get it fixed before it gets too bad. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Miller?
I'm good.
Councilman Dobler? Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I will say, Councilman Kell, if you go to DuncanforTopeka on Facebook, where I, on a regular basis, post my weekly news and notes, you'll see that one of my links that I always put is our projects.topeka.org, which goes to our street project page that gets updated pretty regularly, that people can go to to look at, street projects as they're happening, so.
I was thinking of more of a map where it's visual.
It's a map.
Okay, I tried to look for it, I couldn't find it.
Yep.
I was in the last 15 minutes.
I'll send it to you. You can push it out.
I spent the last 15 minutes doing it.
So a couple of quick things. Housing Trust Fund update, there was a question last week during public comment, so I thought I'd give an update. We had a meeting on the Housing Trust Fund. It is moving forward. It is not going to be weeks away, it is going to be months away. We are working to finalize the board because the ordinance that was passed had very specific roles that needed to be filled, in terms of those positions. So work is being done to fill that board. The plan then is to kind of look at programs across the state to make sure that we're bringing in those ideas, let that board start to meet later this year, and then kind of get going. So it is moving, probably not as fast as I know some people like, but sort of as I've said, as you get an update on the land bank here in a month or two, you do it slow to get it right. Because you, you know, if you hit the ground running too fast, that's when things can, can go a little screwy on you. So it is wor, it is moving forward, and I want everyone to know that. I'm going to take, before I take like a sliver of credit, I want to make sure that the staff gets all the credit, which is on that grant that the City Manager talked about, the $176,000. They did all the work, they put in the hard effort to get it. But this is a good reminder to all of us sitting up here and the citizens, I read about that grant, emailed it to staff and said, "Why aren't we getting this money?" And they said, "I don't know, let's, let's do it." Now again, they did all the work after that. I take no credit for the hard work they did. But I think sometimes people think, we either know about stuff that's already out there, "Why aren't you getting money from this?", or "Have you guys applied for that?". And sometimes I have constituents who tell me, "How come you guys aren't participating in this?". And I say, "'Cause I didn't know about it. So tell me about it." And then I'm happy to push it along to staff and have the conversation, see if we can move it forward. So if you see it, put it in front of us, and then we can put it in front of staff and make it happen.
Yeah, and if I may, Councilman Duncan is exactly right. Every job I've been in, what, we have people looking at stuff, but remember, we don't have one person looking through all those grants, keeping track of all that stuff, and even if we did, it's tough to do. So it helps when Spencer calls up and says, "Now why aren't we applying for that?". So then we get into it and we apply for it. So the more ears we have out there and the more questions that are asked, helps us not miss something.
I always tell people, I'd rather you be the third or fourth person who tell me about something than assume I already know, and nobody ever tells me, right? So, so just a good reminder to not just us, but constituents, we do listen, we do take those top advice and move them forward. The last thing is, the weather's good, so you've, probably people have seen me out of bounds, trying not to wreck on my bike, but I usually take this time of year to go out in the district and ride around and walk around and, and do what I can to check on people. So I'll randomly walk up to people and say, "Hey", and they'll be, "Who is this strange guy talking to me and why?". I do make sure I identify myself, but it's just a good way to get out in the district. So if you see me out there, that's what I'm doing, I'm just making sure things are running right in the district. So thank you, Mayor.
I think, I think PD has, I think PD has had some calls on me. Maybe wore a sign or something, I don't know. Good meeting, you know? I think we're reminded that no matter how good a job we think we're, we're trying to do, there's always somebody who isn't happy with it. So we just keep trying to do our best. I think that's important, that people understand that. We do have need for two executive sessions, I believe, City Attorney?
Yes.
Will you please read?
I will. Sorry, my computer randomly just decided to do something weird. Give me one second. There we go. The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 30 minutes to discuss employer-employee negotiations relating to one or more unions as justified by KSA 7543-19B3. The meeting will resume in the City Council chambers. The following staff are necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations, interim City Manager Neinstadt, and other staff he deems necessary.
Okay. You've heard the need for an executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion to go into executive session by Councilman Hiller, second by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We will recess and take a 10-minute break before we start discussions. Okay. We're coming out of our first executive session. We've had our discussions, no decisions have been made. There is a need for a second executive session. City Attorney, will you read, please?
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss one or more applicants for employment as allowed under the non-elected personnel exemption, KSA 7543-19B1. The open meeting will resume in the City Council chambers. The following staff may be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations, interim City Manager Neinstadt, and other staff he finds necessary.
Okay. You've heard a need for a second session. Is there a motion to go into executive? Deputy Mayor moves to go into executive session, second by Councilman Kell. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Aye, aye, aye. Okay. We'll go immediately into our second session.